I'd like to thank you all for coming out. It looks like we've got a good crowd here tonight. First of all, if you'll join me, we'll say the place is a flag.
The place is a flag. The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Board commitments, John, you've got them?
I can do it.
On the wall?
On the wall. To improve our effectiveness, the Hardin County Board of Education commits to keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district and support district goals, and support board decisions.
Okay, thank you. And John Wright, you got the recognitions?
I do, Mr. Chairman. You have that resolution in front of you. It's our HCS Better Together Award, Resolution of Recognition. And if you'll pass that, we'll get started with those awards.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the resolution. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we have a student, a staff member, and three members of our community that we would like to present awards for this evening for the HCS Better Together Award. And the first is our student, Miss Anna Vaughn. Anna, come on up here, young lady. Anna, her smile brightens the room, and you can tell that she's in it. Just her, she's very boisterous, and Anna's a wonderful young lady. She's a North Hardin High School sophomore. She's very accustomed to the stage and bright lights. She starred as little Anna, not Anna, Anna, in a recent performance of Frozen Junior at the Hardin County Schools Performing Arts Center by the North Hardin Choir. She also participated in a variety of Missoula Children's Theater performances, including Rapunzel, Alice in Wonderland, Peter and Wendy, Gulliver's Travels, Robin Hood, and the Emperor's New Clothes. She was Belle in the North Hardin High School's choir production of Beauty and the Beast, and she also plays in her spare time. She also plays volleyball and will play tennis in the spring for the Trojans. She's also a member of the FCA and choir clubs. Congratulations, Anna.
Congratulations.
And her parents are here.
Parents here.
Sisters and brother, or sister and brother, wave, everybody. Wave, Vaughn family.
Got a number two coming along there, I believe.
Yeah, that's right, absolutely.
Okay, Ms. Samantha Daniel, are you here, Ms. Daniel? Come on up here, Ms. Daniel. Ms. Daniel is a special education facilitator and low-incidence classroom instructor at James T. Alton Middle School. She has served in that role for seven years. Every decision she makes focuses on the betterment of the lives of her students. The list of events, programs, and opportunities she coordinates, organizes, and provides for her students is endless. Mrs. Daniel organizes the well-anticipated kickball event on Miracle Field at the Elizabethtown Sports Park every year. Special needs students from four districts and 12 schools participate in this tremendously successful event. She also co-conceptualized a project with JTA teacher Richard Rowland, who's back in the back room tonight, called Peer Buddies. And students from traditional education settings visit and mentor in Mrs. Daniel's special needs classrooms. These partnerships help students feel valued, and they create an eternal bond between people who may have never encountered each other. So thank you for all you do, Ms. Daniel. We appreciate you. All right, next we give our community award tonight to three gentlemen. Brent Doty, is Brent here? All right, come on up, Brent. And Ron Thomas, Ron here? No? And Connor Lake, Connor, is Connor here? All right, well, Mr. Doty, you're the Lone Ranger here, but these three gentlemen recently gave an entire day to our district by serving as judges and mentors at our well-attended Hardin County Schools Lego Robotics Competition. If you ever had a chance to attend that, I know, Mr. Seago, I think you've been there several times. It's a very, very well orchestrated and put-together event, and certainly with help from Mr. Doty and his friends. So thank you, sir. We appreciate you. My job is done.
Right now?
Thank you.
Ms. Morgan wants to make a presentation here, I think.
Mr. Wright, if you want to come on back up here?
This is unscripted, but still surprising.
You're gonna go over there. So we couldn't put this in the minutes because he sees the minutes, but Mr. John Wright is the public relations person for Hardin County Schools, but more importantly, after hours. I have a few pictures of him mowing outside of this building. So we tragically lost our custodian, and John stepped right up and has started mowing. And if you ever get to hear, he is a guest on our local radio station, WQXE, and just does a great job of working for the community. And you will see him out and about. He also is the announcer for the Bruins. Brother Belle passed that privilege on to him, and he does that. And we just greatly appreciate everything he does for Hardin County Schools and for our community. So thank you.
John Monekgrass will be a never-ending job.
I tell you, if you do a job more than twice, it's yours for a lifetime.
May have a few leaves to rake even. All right. Focus on academics is Mr. Sutton. There he is, over there. Yeah.
All right, I want to start tonight by reading Work Ethic Standard Number Seven, Cooperation and Teamwork. Students are expected to work cooperatively with others to problem-solve, work together to complete projects, handle conflict professionally, accept their role as a leader and/or team member, and do what they can to help get things done. And that's one of the things we focus on here in Hardin County Schools, the Grade Eight, but specifically Number Seven tonight. That standard, the key word I want to point out here is accept their role as a leader. And we try to provide many opportunities for our students in this district who take on leadership roles. And one of those projects we've done there through EC3 is the ILEAD program. Ms. Wright and Mr. Bobby Thompson have done a great job in getting this started over there, and not just impacting high school students, but our middle school students have got to go and learn from these students. It kind of creates a vertically aligned leadership program and opportunities. So we're gonna kind of start with them presenting tonight and the work they do through leadership, and then follow it up with our middle school career fair. Some of these leaders, they go through this program, also have an opportunity to visit community members on Monday and kind of follow up with that with Ms. Kristin Sword. So Mr. Bobby Thompson, if he'll come on up with his students, we'd love to have them here tonight.
Thank you for having us, first of all. ILEAD is the brainchild of our counselor, Mrs. Christie Wright. Five years ago, she saw for a need in leadership within students, but not students right now, not students in five years, but students in 20 years, when they are going to be their most influential in their community, in their profession, in everything that they do. And so we have started this program, and the most public part of that is our working with middle school students. We take about 20 to 25 students from each of the middle schools, not the best students at the class and their classes, but the most influential students at their schools. And we try to pour into them different aspects. Our students will discuss that in particular. But we are looking for them to go back to their middle school to show those leadership skills, and then have those sixth and seventh grade students see that and say, I want to be like that person. And the influence line here can go for many, many decades. But there's more than that. We also have community leaders that come to talk to our ILEAD students. We have Jenny Oldham, our county attorney. We've had Dr. Godfrey, who comes in, who's head of Baptist Health. We've even had Mrs. Morgan comes in. And hopefully, our students will see that there are leaders in our community and how to get to that role, and hopefully see, I want to do that. I want to be in charge of the hospital. I want to be in charge of a school district. I will leave you with this. Eleanor Roosevelt said, "Average minds discuss people. Good minds discuss events, and great minds discuss ideas." These are the idea talkers.
Good evening. I am Andreas Jenkins, and I am a student from North Hardin High School, as well as a student in the Academy Program at EC3. Today, I am here to speak to you about the Academy's ILEAD program. It has had a very positive impact on everyone involved. We have groups of around 20 eighth graders from all five middle schools come to EC3. And during these sessions, we have fun, interactive activities and detailed learning topics about leadership, with the main four topics being leadership, personality traits, communication, and teamwork. Each group of ILEAD juniors has 25 minutes with the eighth graders, and every minute visibly has a huge impact. We hope to instill those said characteristics within the students and to make them better leaders, and so that they can go back to their home schools and share their newfound lessons with their peers. In ILEAD, we teach the students very valuable lessons indeed. But us juniors are just as grateful to grow more during each session. I'm now giving the floor to my friend Chad, who will further expound upon that.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chad Frederick, and I'm from Central Hardin High School. I'm a part of the ILEAD teamwork group at EC3. My journey with ILEAD started back in eighth grade when I was selected to be a part of the wonderful program. I didn't realize the impact it had on me until I became a group leader as a junior. In my role in high school, I gained the experience to teach younger kids about teamwork. With every group of middle schoolers, I see the effects it has on them and on me, from the beginning of the day to the end. When I was in this program as an eighth grader, I felt impacted to carry out the core values of ILEAD, which are do the right thing because it's the right thing to do, go out of your way to make someone else's day better, work harder than everyone else, protect your integrity, and to be kind. Even in the midst of COVID, I was still thinking about how I could be kind to someone. When high school truly began, I shifted my goals to these core values. And with that, my hope is that these middle schoolers are supporting high school with new people and perspectives that are going to carry out these core values with them into their everyday lifestyles. I have a soft spot for kids, and to be able to see them change among each other is a gift of its own. The nostalgia of it all warms my heart, and I have loved every minute of it. And what an amazing opportunity we have to show these kids how to be leaders in their schools. And no matter where I am, in five, 10, or even 15 years from now, I plan to use this knowledge to become a greater leader, be able to work with others, and be a good communicator in my adult life. I'm so glad I got the chance to speak to you all tonight, and thank you.
Good evening. My name is Katherine Updograph, and I'm an EC3 Academy student that attends John Hardin High School. I also participate in the school's ILEAD program and the personality group. While growing our knowledge on being leaders through this program, we are also blessed to live in a community that is full of phenomenal leaders to look up to. A few weeks ago, Kenny Rambo, the president of Heartland Communications Consultants, spoke to us about how the new Blue Oval Battery Plant with Ford coming to Glendale will expand services and provide economic growth. He also expressed his gratitude for our dedication to being future leaders in Hardin County and highlighted the importance of being said leaders. Throughout this year, we will get the opportunity to hear from even more important leaders in our community, including Kendra Scott from the Hardin County Chamber, Jenny Oldham, the county attorney, Dr. John Godfrey from Baptist Health, Mayor Jeff Gregory, and our superintendent, Ms. Terri Morgan. Through their speeches, myself and other ILEAD students will learn exactly what it takes to become effective leaders in our community, and will be able to share the knowledge with future leaders, including the eighth graders that Andreas previously mentioned. This will hopefully provide Hardin County with an abundance of strong leaders in the future to help grow our community. I would also like to thank Ms. Wright and Mr. Thompson for pushing us to be our best versions of ourselves and putting their time and effort into making this happen. They are both outstanding leaders in our school, and I know that all of the ILEAD students are grateful for them. Thank you.
Hey, we got the parents here with them? Parents?
If y'all stand up for us, let us recognize you all for bringing these leaders to us.
Keep them focused, they're on the right track.
So what'd you notice there? Leaders growing leaders. A lot of them talked about what they're doing in eighth grade. And the eighth graders we have in this program now, they're gonna be up here three years from now talking about the impact they're having on the students below them. So what does that lead us into a kind of a, you know, overarching theme here, is that our middle school career fair, you know, the rumor has it, this community's gonna grow a little bit, right?
Absolutely.
Rumor has it. And we've got to be preparing these students for careers and leaders right here in our own community. We can't let them get outside our borders. So I think it's very important that, you know, starting next Monday with our middle school career fair, they get in front of these people and learn how to show them what our work ethic and our Grade Eight standards are all about. Ms. Sword's gonna share a little bit about that tonight, and we have a little invitation for you for Monday. So Ms. Sword, okay, there she is. She's already here.
Good evening, how are you all?
Good.
We continue to pour into our middle school students through opportunities like ILEAD and then the Middle School Demonstration Fair. Whenever we talk to our local business partners and we talk about a middle school career fair, we're not trying to recruit middle schoolers. We are simply demonstrating to them local opportunities that are available in the pathways that they might be able to pursue in high school. So right now, our eighth graders are working to explore all the pathways that are available to them in their classes. And our teachers are working with them right now, along with the high school transition coaches, to look into their tassel interest pathways at three pathways that they might be really interested in pursuing into high school and beyond that. And so our middle school career fair is basically giving them an opportunity to talk to some local business partners that are in these different pathways. And we've asked these local business partners to come up with something interactive for the students. So again, we're not talking to them about current positions that are available, but we're trying to talk to them about what that career has to offer, how they might further explore that outside of the classes that they are able to take in high school through partnerships and clubs and programs that they might be able to join. So I just wanted to extend an invitation to you to join us on Monday. This will be held at the Bluegrass Sportsplex. And so we are super thankful. We have over 26 local business partners that have agreed to be a part of this. And we would love for you to join us and see what our middle schoolers are talking to those business partners about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this a continuous thing, so you can come?
It is. It is all day. So the times are here, 9:00 to 1:45. And our middle schools rotate in and out during that time. So anytime between 9:00 and 1:45 that you can stop by at the Bluegrass Sportsplex, we'd love to have you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Good evening. I'm Stacy Brauner, and I'm here to talk and spotlight our Gifted and Talented program that we have for Hardin County Schools. I'm joined by Ms. Shelley Doty. So Mr. Wright's got a slideshow he's gonna put up here, and we're gonna talk about our numbers, where we've been and where we are currently, and what we've already accomplished this far along in the year with our gifted and talented students. So the very first slide you see here, we're going back to 2016, 2017 school year, and you will notice that our end-of-the-year Gifted and Talented count, this includes our primary talent pool, grades K through eighth grade, this is our middle school group as well. We were at 994 students. We had a number of seven gifted and talented teachers. And as you can see, we declined in the 2017 and 2018 school year. So that, at the end of the year, we ended up losing one of our teachers, but we rebounded. We started, we got other kids identified. Our number started to increase. And despite a pandemic, you can see we have continually rebounded from that interruption of instruction due to the pandemic. So we're thriving. And next year, when you look at our 2022 and 23 school year, you're gonna see that number increase, and you're also going to see the number of gifted and talented teachers have increased because of the generosity of our board, increasing us additional GT teachers because of our numbers and how they have grown. So the next thing we're gonna do, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Doty, and she's gonna talk to you about just the many things that we've already done up until November with our gifted and talented students.
My name is Shelley Doty. This is my first year as coordinator, and I'm proof that you are never too old to learn. I have learned so much since the beginning of the school year. It started with, right off the bat, East Hardin was visited by Chad Hobbs from the Meade County Messenger. Several students came together to publish an article that was listed in their papers. So that was right off the beginning of the school year. My first district-wide responsibility was scheduling Ted Weasey to come visit our middle school and high school students. We mostly invited students who were leadership-identified, but we did have a lot of other students who were welcome as well. We had about 160 kids who were welcome to attend. We also partnered, excuse me. We partnered with E-Town High School, and they invited about 20 of their students as well. Here's some pictures of how much fun we had that day. My next big event was planning our middle school Lego Robotics Tournament. That was in October. We had three teams from each middle school to participate. We had about 62 students, maybe a little bit more than that. And we had about 20 adults who volunteered to help us that day. And it was a lot of fun, a very successful event. We also had Craft and Gatton Academies come to visit in October. We had about 35 people attend to hear more about those opportunities from both of those campuses. And we're currently planning our last Super Saturday event at Western. We have taken about 30 kids to Bowling Green's campus the past three Saturdays, including the one that's upcoming. And these are students in first through sixth grades. The other GT staff members happened to share some pictures of some fun things that they're doing. This is Meadowview Elementary, working on some math strategies. And Woodland, building their own resorts. And Rainyville enjoying learning about science using Duplo Legos. JTA learned about dangerous knowledge, but they created their own sequels to Prometheus Bound. I bet that was a lot of entertainment. West Hardin studied the Great Depression. They learned a lot of dances, which I bet was super fun with middle schoolers. Vine Grove and Heartland studied a little bit about the Macy's Day Parade and created their own floats using some STEM practices. They also developed their own restaurants at Vine Grove and Heartland. We've also started this year with math focus groups. Right now, we're just focusing on third graders, trying to meet the needs of those students who don't typically get any other services. So those of us in elementary are just focusing on geometry right now. Fifth graders at Burkhead, which I see a bunch of my friends are here tonight, they've been enjoying microscopes and looking at slides. And we even did some investigating of pond water, and they found a dead bug that we also looked at this week. And at Lincoln Trail, they're also studying figurative language.
Thank you.
All right, keep up the good work.
Mr. Sutton, do you want to have those students to stand that came with them? I think there are some students here from those schools.
There's some GT students out there tonight? Ms. Doty, there's some GT students who want to... Absolutely, they should've been up here. All right. Big round of applause for those guys. I see they're carrying a trophy. They win something over there? Whiz Kids. Creekside, all right. Ms. Doty, how many years you have here in Hardin County Schools? 11 years already? And we got Ms. Brauner back here, probably classified and certified position, at least 26 years. So that's a lot of experience here with our district, and that's why they're making a difference with kids. And we will not get in a Whiz Kids competition here because I'm afraid I'll miss half the questions they try to ask. Sit down, we can't.
Mr. Bender, can you share, or Ms. Thompson, or can you share the names of these young men and women?
You're gonna come up to the mic.
Yeah, come on up here, and let's make sure that these get the recognition they deserve. And we'll get medals to these young men and women, too. Or young man and women.
This is our academic team, what we call our Whiz Kids. By the way, I'm Alisa Nichols. I teach second grade at GC Burkhead, been academic team coach for 14 years or something.
Yeah, we've done the same.
We've done, we've been together.
We're gonna go out together, too.
But the Whiz Kids competition, these kids got together, and they won it all for Hardin County Schools. Hardin County, all of the elementary schools competed, city schools, Elizabethtown Independent, and Grayson County. So they came out on top and won. So this is...
The members of our Whiz Kids team this year is Justin Johnson. He's a fifth grader. Well, they're all fifth graders. Amelia Jackson, Leah Anderson, Quinn Yates, and Addison Blop.
We'll give you all some medals for it. I'll bring them to you, okay?
Yeah, trophies.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job. Yeah, any of y'all would like to leave, the rest of the meeting will be boring compared to this.
Welcome to the update. Probably want to leave.
That was, they've already done that.
That's what we're doing, okay. We're considering that part of that one in. All right. I don't know if anyone signed in. I'll ask John here in a minute. John Wright, see if anyone signed in to speak. All right, thank you. All right, construction updates. We heard from Alliance Construction today. They think Central Hardin project is pretty much on schedule due to the unusual circumstances we had of concrete. But we're able to get concrete again, and they're progressing on. They've had good weather to work, so they've been able to make up a little bit of time. So we may not have reached the true goal of being totally on time, but we are getting closer. We saw some somewhat renderings of started drawings on our food and nutrition, child nutrition center that we're looking at building a new building for. And one variant is totally outdated, so saw that. We're still working on a West Hardin site, but we think we're getting close. So hopefully, in the next few weeks, we'll have more information about that. I think land might be the hardest thing a school can find. Now, you think janitors and custodians and teachers and food service workers are hard to find? Start looking for land. There's some out there, but it's pricey. So anyway, on the construction end, we are, we're moving forward. John, you got anything you need to add to it? All right, John, Steph, he keeps everybody in line and sends us a lot of photos and everything during the week, so we're pretty well kept updated. I think things is really gonna look good. And the school is, we're working on the HVAC part.
Oh, we're going down to Michigan.
Yeah, your old school.
Yes. 25 years of...
That's what I was getting ready to ask you, your old school.
My old school.
And it would, and I couldn't come up, we've got so many schools. All right. So I think that pretty much covers the construction updates. In consideration of the consent agenda, anyone have anything they want to pull out a bit or anything? We're approving three Central Hardin High School students to graduate early this year, December 16. And I guess you might explain that a little bit. Some of these students are at a point where they would rather move on.
We have some students who go to Hardin County High, and they work with the staff there to earn their high school diploma. Some of these students are in a situation that they want to go into work. Some of these students want to continue their education. Some of these students are planning to move with their families for different reasons, but they wanted to finish their high school requirements here in Kentucky before leaving. And so they... And so they select to go to Harden County High. So it's just one of the other options that we provide to our students so that they are successful in earning that high school diploma because we know that is going to lead to many opportunities. And if they didn't finish with Harden County High, some of them would not have the opportunity to finish high school. So that ceremony will be on December 10th. And Dr. King, they do one family at a time. They take about 15 minutes per family and it's just a great celebration. And then we put together a video for all of those families to have and we shared that out on our Harden County Educational Television. And it's just a great celebration. If they would like to invite the board to stop by at any time that day to, with the delivery of diplomas.
That's great. They just, sometimes special occasions need to happen and we wanna be user-friendly with those and let those students do what's really best for them. We're also gonna approve John Harden High School band to travel to Orlando, Florida, April 10th through the 15th. And Central Harden softball team to travel to Pigeon Forge, Tennessee, April 9th through the 14th. And we're approval of the December 10, 2022 graduation date for summer, fall, and winter graduates of Harden County High. So that's covering all of the Harden County and college view and east school. Financial services, we got a report from financial services in order. We're approving orders of the treasure. School activity fund balances. We're approving a revised BG1 for 800 South Lockston Parkway. And we're approving a $1,500 donation from the Rainyville Optimus Club for the, for youth family resource and youth service center. And also an anonymous $10,000 donation to West Harden Middle School volleyball program. So we are more than glad to call it anonymous. We'd be glad to mention the name, but they wanted it to be anonymous. And anyone wants to give an anonymous gift like that, we're gladly accept it.
We have some other people back there willing to accept another donation, right?
I'm sure, right. We're got some change orders here. We're proving for the Central Harden High School renovation project and also the couple of old change orders on the East Harden Middle School project. So approval to declare the greenhouse at John Harden High School surplus, that's the old greenhouse down by Wilson Road. And we're approving information, or we received information on the contract from Alpha and Omega Cleaning Service. So we're considering maybe using some cleaning service to help us. We're having a hard time keeping a full staff of custodians. So that's about it. Anyone have anything that they wanna pull out of that or elaborate on? Be glad to.
If not, just, yeah, I noticed that we have a representative from Weir here tonight. We're gonna be approving that, that's part of the consent agenda as well.
Was that on there? Did we get it on?
I think it's on there.
It is. C10.
C10.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
Approval of the construction management services for the new West Harden Middle School.
I'm looking, I'm looking at it. Must have, we got a new one here, didn't we? Yeah, I had to, when I had it noon. Sorry, I didn't get that one. Yeah, we are. We're approving the construction management services for the new West Harden, that being Weir Construction.
Yes.
You with Weir? All right.
I believe he's gonna be our construction superintendent.
It sounds great. We heard, we've got a Harden County and I've known Claude Skip and the family for a long time. Fine group of people. I think, I didn't get to attend the presentation, but I, I have known that family for years and I highly respect them. So hopefully y'all did a good job on that. Hopefully we're gonna... Thank you. All right, thank you. Did I miss anything else? The whole agenda from lunchtime.
No, I believe, yes. I think that's it.
So, that being said, we need a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. And we're down to action items. New business? Anyone have any new business? No new business. Superintendent's report.
I just wanted to give an update on our attendance of Harden County Schools. Then I'm gonna ask Mr. Wright to come up and share a video with us about Harden County Schools and the great things that we're offering before we share it with our public. But currently we have an enrollment of 14,151 students. Each day that is increasing. This does not include preschool. So if you add preschool to that, those numbers increase tremendously and will continue to increase as we approve students for that. One of the things I want to share with you is our current attendance for this past month was 93%, but we are seeing declining enrollment due to the flu. And so just ask people to stay healthy. If you're sick, please stay home, keep your children home. And as always, use the universal precautions of washing hands, sneezing into your arm. We do have a very large number of masks still available for anyone who selects to do that. But we're just proud that people continue to have confidence in Harden County Schools. You see from each month when we have presentations. Today was gifted and talented and you see the hard work and dedication we're putting into that. I see Ms. New here, our Director of Innovation, with the new things happening with our high schools and middle schools with project-based learning. And our logo with that is keep it real. And that's what we're trying to do is to make sure our students have real-world experiences as they go through Harden County Schools. So with that, I'm gonna ask Mr. Wright to play a video that hopefully all of our schools here will put on their site and then we'll put this all over our social media as well.
For Harden County Schools, getting to this point isn't the only thing that matters. We prioritize what comes before this moment. So then each student is prepared for what is beyond. The steps each student takes to reach success will look different, but the pathway can be found at Harden County Schools. One way we invest in our students is by focusing on a variety of academic opportunities. My experience with Harden County Schools has been very positive. I have a daughter who receives special services, seeing all the people who I feel like are cheerleaders of my daughter. And they have helped her grow, reach milestones, do things that we didn't know she ever would. I feel very, very grateful for the staff of Harden County Schools. It's literally changed my daughter's life and changed my family.
Every teacher that he has, I mean, we're just standing so phone numbers, there's never been a time that I ever felt like I couldn't call them about anything or text them. They've all been so awesome with contacting me and saying, hey, this happened today. Like he wasn't feeling good or he was off some way, just anything. And it's been just really amazing to have that connection with people that you only met because of school.
They do care to every kid's level. Both my kids excel academically and they get challenged, so they don't feel bored. They pull out kids and challenge the kids.
It's been great to, to have teachers that are so focused on what works for your student or for your child and knowing that it might be different from the student they sit next to them. But being able to, to see what they're doing at a different level and knowing that they are focused on what works for them versus just what works for everybody.
To pass your child's future efforts today, learn more at harden.kyschools.us.
We'll be very proud for that show on all of our social media. And again, just check out the great things that are happening in Harden County Schools. And thanks to those in the audience tonight who make that happen on a daily basis. So thank you all.
Very good. And Brittany, does East Harden stay open 24 hours a day? I have never seen a school used as much as that. Okay, that helps me some because I thought... Well, you can give him the boot and control your school, okay? It is, I, I have passed there several times and it looks like a high school.
It's lit up all the time.
Yeah. All right, executive session. We need a short executive session tonight. So probably November 23rd, school dismissed. November 24th, Thanksgiving. And offices closed the 25th. November, or December the 9th through the 10th is KSBA Winter Symposium. And we'll be back here December the 15th for another board meeting. So y'all feel free to stay or we're going in here and into executive session for a few minutes, but I don't think there'll be any action taken afterwards. So...
I'll move we go into executive session for the purpose of...
Student discipline.
School discipline, all right.
Yes. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.